Welcome to Sound Off on 96.7 The Eagle, La Porte County's original social media. Sound Off is a public interest forum that encourages your voice to be heard on the topics and issues impacting our local communities. We invite you to be part of the conversation by calling or texting (219) 362-0522. You may also email your questions to soundoff@967theeagle.com. This is a topic based program and we ask that you keep your comments brief, concise, and related to the topic being discussed. The views expressed on Sound Off are those of the hosts or callers and do not represent the opinion of 96.7 The Eagle, Spoon River Media LLC, or the sponsors. The on-air line is now open for your calls or texts at (219) 362-0522. And now, Sound Off on 96.7 The Eagle.
And welcome to Sound Off on this Monday. Stan Maddox here. Our guest today, that's right, we have a guest in our studios today. It's La Porte County Commissioner Steve Hollifield. So give us a call, 362-0522. That number again, (219) 362-0522. So give us a call or shoot us a text message. Steve, as always, welcome to Sound Off.
Good afternoon, Stan. Everybody I'm sure was glad to see the fair come, and I'm probably just as glad to see it over. It was a fun time out there, a little hot, but it always is at fair time. Spent several days out there walking through the barns, saw the dairy show part of the day, saw part of the auction, talked to a lot of people. It's good to get out there once in a while.
Yeah, I hear a hog went for $17,000 at the auction. I guess that's a record price.
It's gotta be a record. I mean, considering most of the time when I was raising pigs years ago, you sold them for 40 cents a pound. And I think that come up to be about $67 or $68 a pound.
Wow. Far cry from $17,000.
Yeah, good for a, it was a good cause though for the young lady. I'm sure she'll probably use it towards college or something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. A lot of generous people buying those animals from the 4H kids, and that's a good thing. All right, I understand budget hearings began today, right?
Yes.
For next year's budget. Of course, we've talked a lot about this projected $2.3 million in lost revenue because of the statewide property tax deductions. How are you, how do you think things are going to shape up with the budget for next year?
Well, I was there for about an hour and a half this morning. I'm trying to learn the budget process. Tomorrow, I think nine or 10, we go in for our commissioner's budget. I'm hoping to make it that way and just sit there and have, listen to how they do it. And I think, I think overall, from talking to department heads, they are trying to figure out where to cut. But the biggest issue we've got, and I've said this for the last eight, 10 months, if we do not give these people, our county employees, a raise somehow, we're going to start losing more of them. They deserve a raise every year. They're working on the same dollar a month they had the year before. And as you know, inflation goes up. You can't feed a family on what you made two years ago.
Is the county losing employees because of it?
Yes, some departments are. Yes, they are.
And you're afraid it's going to get worse unless they're given a pay increase?
I think what will happen, then talking to certain department heads, as well as other county employees, and a lot of county employees coming to eat at the fair, because they were allowed to go there for their lunch hour and got in for free during the week. And we're, if we don't do something to keep them here, we're going to lose the cream of the crop. And then we're going to be down to just having to train everybody, trainees. And I'm nervous that if we don't do something with this, how are we going to carry on the services we provided for the county for so long?
So it seems like this is a perfect storm. The state's cutting millions of dollars from the county budget. You have a need to give employees a pay increase on top of some of these other expenses you've been hit with recently, like the Hyler Building and health insurance always goes up in costs. So is, yeah, like you mentioned, is there, where do you cut? Where do you cut? And where do you find money to give to the employees?
The word today by Councilman Novak, and I've echoed the same thing the last few months, is attrition. When people retire, or they quit, or they leave, we have to consider whether that job needs to be filled again, or can we let that job go with less people and use the technologies available? That way, no one, repeat, no one is going to lose their job. We're going to keep everyone employed, but we've got to figure out how to keep them happy and keep them working here. And like I said, insurance has gone up tremendously. That's been talked about a little bit. Employees I've talked to, they're not looking for massive 8, 10, 12% raises. They're looking for something to keep up with the cost of inflation, to keep them happy, and to keep them, you know, they've got families to feed just like everybody else does.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, let's take our first telephone call here on Sound Off. Go right ahead. You're on with Steve Hollifield. Hi.
I'm calling, I'd like to make a couple comments to, to your guest. The first comment is when the mayor annexed 39, he, he took over, over $300,000 in police protection. He's going to buy a new dump truck and a driver. So it's like $500,000 he's saving the county. How do you adjust for that?
As far as the same, the, even the people inside C Limits, they pay for county tax. So the way I was told by the State House and local officials here, the county itself will not lose any revenue for the annexation, but the people who are being annexed in will pay a higher tax rate for the city.
Well, I'm confused because the, the mayor has made announcements that he was taking over 39 because he wanted a former member of the 39 to build his assisted living. And he wanted another politician to build two condominiums here in 39. And he's made it a point to say that it's not going to cost anybody anything. He's going to pay for it.
That is the city, and that's Mayor Dermody. He can do what he wants inside the C Limits. That doesn't concern the county right now, but I do know those people will still be paying the county tax rate that they always have been. I think it's 5% of what goes in, we'll get.
So he's going to be paying, so, so basically, he's getting three new policemen, three new police cars, and all that for free?
I don't see where the word "free" comes from, sir.
Well, we're not paying any more in taxes.
In the Concerns District, if you are in the C Limits, you'll be paying a higher tax rates, is what I understand.
Well, at every meeting that I went to with Tom Dermody, they all said the same thing, that our taxes would not go up.
Well, that's, again, that's the city of La Porte and between the citizens out there that were annexed in, and Mayor Dermody and his city council. There's nothing, there's not much the county can do about that.
The way I look at it, right away, the state or whoever, wherever you get your money, they should subtract $600,000 right off the top for an adjustment for this year.
Tomorrow morning at 6:30, Mayor Dermody will be on the radio. Feel free to call and then ask him that, or Tom likes to give out my phone number. I'll give Tom's out, (219) 363-7293. And I talk to Tom today on that cell phone.
Okay. And just a reminder, you know, Mayor Dermody comes on every Tuesday morning with Dennis on the Morning Mayhem. And like Steve said, he'll be on at 6:30 tomorrow morning. So if that gentleman wants to ask him that question, Tom Dermody will be here at 6:30, bright and early tomorrow morning. Let's take another phone call on Sound Off. You're on with Steve Hollifield.
Yes, I'm calling regards to expenditure that you advocated back about four or five months ago. That was $50,000 for Shaw Freeman to defend us against the rate increase. And a couple of weeks ago, the rate increase came out, and it was 16 and a half percent or thereabouts, which was basically the same amount that we were told was going to be given to NIPSCO. You know, it wasn't going to be the 32, 32% which they wanted. Every year for the last 20 years I've been following this, or even more, the same thing happens. They apply for 50% rate increase, they get 25%. We're not gaining anything by paying freedmen to go down there and argue for nothing. Now, I would imagine that if we do that, some idiot does this again on, as a commissioner or a councilman, that they would do it on a contingent basis. If you can't get less than what the lobbying groups are saying they're going to be getting, then you don't get any money. But $50,000 is a lot of money, and you were behind this thing to, to give it to him. How are you going to get the $50,000 back? And how are you going to get it back for the taxpayers? We've got no benefit out of that.
And during that court case down there from the IURC, and to go speak before the IURC, you have to have legal representation. And also, within that, we earlier got $3.5 billion in commitment from NIPSCO to spend for upgrades inside the Kingsbury Industrial Park. And out of this last one, we now have a $5 million commitment from them to build some kind of an upgrade or a power plant possibly within the county limits. So in my opinion, to get the representation down there, and it was not 32%, it was a 22% rate increase they're asking, and they settled for 16. So they're 6% less than what they could have gotten.
Okay, yeah, the commitment to upgrade the electric, electricity, right, at the Kingsbury Industrial Park. That's, that paid for itself right there, right?
We need that, and need that more increased electricity power out there to attract more businesses. That's the thing, same thing we keep hearing every time someone wants to come here to La Porte. NIPSCO doesn't have enough updated electric system to take on these new industrial projects. St. Joe County is following that now with AEP, which I think about three years ago, AEP invested a lot of money and put a new power plant there on Walnut Road to update for that area. And I want to see us push NIPSCO to do that exact same thing in La Porte County, because in order to provide the services we need for the county, and to make sure the county employees stay happy with pay raises and benefits packages, we need to increase the tax base. Not the rate, the tax base, which means the more people we have here paying taxes, that increases the dollar amount we have to spend and provide those services. It will also help our schools, as if you recently remember, we just closed Lincoln School, and Kingsford Heights has been talked about now for several times. We need to improve the base and bring more people here, build houses, and then provide the jobs for them.
All right. We have a text message here, Steve. This person is asking, why has full property information been omitted from 39 North Properties on the Beacon website since being annexed?
Again, that's something you'll have to take up with the city, or you can talk to the county assessor, because he's the one that deals with the Beacon Schneider. And sometimes Beacon does not upgrade fully on a timely basis.
All right. This person says, just want to say Steve is doing a great job for the county. Glad to see him out at the fair and talking to everyone.
Well, thank you, whoever that is. And I try to get out there, and this, this time of year is kind of busy for me, always has been, even when my daughters were in 4H, my daughters and son were in 4H. I was not able to spend as much time there as I should have. And we don't farm there as much as we used to. And I've got a couple of good friends and neighbors that are helping me take part of this on, and we were able to spend more time out here this year.
All right. Fair time, quality time at the fair. That's always a good thing.
Quality time, and it didn't help my waist size any. And I always make the joke with the ladies in the office I work with every day, they're dragging me somewhere to eat. And I've probably gained about 50 pounds since I started selection cycle last year, with all the pancakes and dinners and lunches and everything else. And, but I found a lot of restaurants here in La Porte County. The food trucks are amazing. The fair vendors, there's a lot of great places to eat here in La Porte County.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, we've got to take a quick commercial break. Stay with us here on Sound Off.
We're waiting to hear from you. Dial or text (362) 0522 and let us know what you think. That's (362) 0522. Back to Sound Off on 96.7 The Eagle.
And welcome back to Sound Off. Our guest today, La Porte County Commissioner Steve Hollifield, (362) 0522. That's our number to call and text. We have a text message here, Steve. Says, good afternoon. I'm curious to know, a while back, about the lawsuit against Deerfield Estates. I live near there and haven't heard much. Of course, that was filed by the Attorney General's Office against Deerfield Estates.
Oh, that's by Kingsford Heights.
You're right.
Yes. That's going through the state. There's nothing, and I'm aware of it, that they've informed us of anything. All I know is that they are going after them because the way they're, where the people, the living conditions for the people out there.
Yeah.
And that's, that's about all I can say right now.
Yeah, had to do with the water. A lot of water shut off.
Sewage, everything.
Things of that nature. Yeah, yeah. And healthy conditions at times, apparently, according to that lawsuit. Let's see, this person says, we talked to the city. City says, that's county. Must be that lady who was asking about the 39 North.
39 North. Depending on, if you can give me some exact areas and references on roads and everything else, I'll look into it. I know there's an issue out there. It used to be the old Cuddy's campground. I guess now I'm showing how old I am. There was a dead end road back there. That was partly county issued, and we did some work out there and got it cleaned up for some people. There's a lot of garbage and junk. We got that cleaned up. So if she could, she can call me at (219) 304-3164 is my cell. Just leave me a message, and I'll check into what, you know, look into it more for her. Just like also, the last time I was here, lady asked about the road paving. The list could not be put out on the air, I found out afterwards, because it was only a preliminary list. I've got the final list here. So if someone's curious about a road that they're living on, I've got the list here, what's getting paved and what's going to be chipped and sealed.
Oh, wow. So you have a whole list of the roads. How many roads are on the list?
Oh, there's two and a half pages here between chip and sealing. And total paving's going to be 38.2 miles on the community crossing side of it. Chip and seal is going to be somewhere about 38 miles. And then there's two miles of chip and microseal, which is a new thing they're starting to do, which is trying to save the roads that are in, before they get too bad.
So about 80 miles a road?
Approximately, yes, approximately. I think, we do that approximately every year. Charity and her staff, the Hannah Department, Rowland Prairie, they get together and say, well, here's a road I'd like to see. And I can tell you, this road list here is considerably smaller than the, than the wish list they had. And again, it all boils down to how much budgets we got. And community crossing grant, that's the biggest portion we use for, for paving. So it helps us a lot.
Okay, that's about $1.5 million worth?
Correct. Plus, we do the match.
Okay, so about $3 million?
Yes. Roads, they get more expensive every year.
Yeah, I mean, here at a time where the state's taking money away from local governments, employees need a pay increase, and then you're facing higher costs, especially in areas like roads. I mean, something's going to have to give, right? Are we going to see a wheel tax? Are we going to see a higher income tax? What do you think?
That is entirely up to the council to decide. I know a wheel tax or an exercise tax, one of the two options we have available to them, is tied to a larger portion for community crossing. And it's just, the state wants to wean the people away from it and make us more self-reliant.
Okay, so the county council makes a decision.
County council makes that decision, just like two years ago, or three years ago, when they put the public safety lit tax in. I was an, I was an opponent of it, not an opponent for the people, for the Sheriff's Department, the people that helps, but I was an opponent about how they did it, where they just went straight, straight for the raise, the increase in the taxes. So they're going to have a tough decision to make this year.
All right. Somebody just sent us a text message. They want to know about, how are the leaky showers in the jail going to be fixed?
Well, it would have been a very simple fix, two commissioner meetings ago, if we would have just let Andy Skiet fix it completely. But now, they want to put it out to bids. So it's, we're demolishing one, try a new program, and see what it does. So we have to wait and see how that pans out when the bids all come in.
Okay, so they, yeah, they're going to kind of take a little bit of time and hopefully get to the problem without having to spend money on more repairs.
Correctly. And it's just like the, some things pop up, you have to fix them regardless of that. And the more time it takes to do the whole bid system, which the bid system has its purpose. But sometimes it doesn't work out for the best. And we already had one idea of what it was going to cost to fix all those. And unfortunately, in my opinion, it's going to cost considerably more by the time it's all said and done.
Okay, yeah, I've heard figures anywhere from a couple of hundred thousand to millions.
All depends how they come back and how they want to approach it. And again, that's something that we're going to look at as far as fiscal responsibility. How much money do we have? But it's got to be fixed, because it's only making the situation worse over there.
Okay. I understand there's something going on in Fish Lake. You want to give us a little, give a little plug about?
The 19th, next Saturday, Lion Paw Support through the Mill Creek Lions Club, they're doing what's called Paddle Fest. It's their main fundraiser for the year. They help out the veterans. They have paddle, paddle, kayak paddle. I don't get into it, I'm too old for this, but it's kayak contest about a race. And they raise money for the veterans to provide service dogs for them. They get gift certificates for food for them. There's also going to be an axe throwing contest, so for the elected and elected people in the local area. So Mr. Dermody, I'm throwing a glove out there for you, buddy. You come to this thing next Saturday and spend some time out there and throw an axe with us. I'll make sure I show up at your lake fest, and that way you can, we can talk to each other then. So that's my, that's my contest for you.
Okay, yeah, get him over there, and then he'll have you sit in the dunk tank or something.
Oh, boy, I don't know about that, but maybe.
Okay, okay. I'm sure Tom wouldn't go easy on you.
No, he's not. Tom's, Tom's very, one thing about Tom, Tom's very, very competitive, but he's, he's a good sport, though.
Okay, somebody's asking, is 800 East north of 525 South getting paved?
I saw something here on 800 East. Bear with me here in a second. I do not, 800 East, oh, no. I do not see 800 East on, on the paving list.
Okay.
It's, they're going to be chipped and sealed between 350 North and 200 North. They're going to chip and seal that area up there.
Okay.
So it must not have been deemed bad enough to be rip and, rip up and tear again.
Okay, because they're saying 800 East north of 525 South. So that would be it, around 300 South or so.
350, it's 350 North, so it's up the north side.
Oh, okay, okay, great. Yeah, don't forget, Steve has a list of all the roads to be repaved or chipped and sealed. So might be a good time to ask more questions. Why doesn't the county have a junk ordinance for properties? A lot of properties are getting worse, making the county look like a dumping ground, like the property on 400 South by State Road 39.
Okay.
Are we going to have a junk ordinance anytime soon? What do you think?
That was talked about several years ago under Rich Brzezinski, when he was a commissioner. I attended that meeting, and boy, did the county catch heck for that. So I personally, I'm, we already have laws on the books. We just need to enforce what laws we have. And again, with the budget constraints, folks, to open up a whole new department, it costs money, because you have to have an office for them. You have to have staff. You have to have people to go out there and enforce these ordinance. You're going to have to provide them with a vehicle, benefits. It costs money to do these things, and we already have laws on the books that can be used to enforce them.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, let's take another phone call here on Sound Off. You're on with Commissioner Hollifield.
Yeah, Steve, this is Kerry Kirkham. I contacted you a while ago about permitting these ambulances that are used, being used for patient transfer.
Yes, you did.
And I wondered if there's anything accomplished on that. At the time I introduced it, talked about it when I was on the council, the county attorney and the EMS guy said that there were, there was no precedent. But I think we ought to be targeting these units who are operating in the county and not paying anything.
I spoke with Eric Fesdemaker on this, after I talked to you, Kerry. The issue there is you, they're not providing a service for the citizens of the county. They're mainly doing transportation. It's not like they're going on ambulance calls for our department. And it came down to, if I believe correctly, it came down to a legal precedent where you can't really infringe on a private business from doing business within the county, if I believe correctly. I can check again when I get back to the office.
Okay, yeah, you have your private ambulance services out there. What's the issue here? What are people concerned about? They're infringing upon the county's services?
Well, they're not really infringing on our services, because they don't go and answer accident calls or down homes, you know, when you fall into a home. That's our EMA department, which for 50 years, they've been doing outstanding job. They're 50 years old this year. This is basically, you see Prompt Superior. They transport people from nursing homes to hospitals and back and forth for doctors' visits and such like that, or from La Porte Hospital to South Bend Hospital. I'm not sure how we could, how we could impose some kind of a fee on them.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, we got another call to take here on Sound Off. Go right ahead. You're on with Commissioner Hollifield. Are you there?
Nope.
Nope, I guess they're not there. Give us a call back. For some reason, you lost your signal, (362) 0522. Another text message here for you, Steve. How's the county going to collect delinquent GPS fees that inmates were ordered to pay and don't pay? How are you going to do that?
I'm assuming you're talking about the ankle bracelet monitoring through the community corrections. I know at the commissioners or council meetings last, I think it was the end of last year when this really came forward, because Marika Beatty had to ask for additional appropriations for leases on those. And Mark Yagelski made a comment that he wants to see the judges start enforcing those rules. It's, they're supposed to be paying for those through their employment, and that's a privilege to be in work release, to keep your job, but you're also supposed to take care of that service we're providing you. They're not doing it. And if you're not going to pay for that service, then why are we letting you get out every day to work? Maybe you should go to jail instead. So I know they're looking at that with the judges.
Okay, yeah, because that's usually part of the strings attached to somebody's work release or probation pay, or serve the rest of your time behind bars.
Correct. And I mean, it's the same thing with child support. You've got an enormous amount of people who do not pay their child support, even though they're employed. Their employers are not following the corridors and making them pay. So it's, it's, I think that's good. We're going to have to work together with the judges and the court system to move that forward.
Okay, okay, yeah, the judge, it sounds like the judges aren't sending enough of them to jail. They're just letting them get away with these unpaid fees.
We also got to be careful with that, because we don't want to overcrowd the jail. And then we've got an issue there with lawsuits and everything else. And that jail functions, for as old as it is, it's functioning pretty good right now. From time to time, we have a problem with it. But I certainly do not want to have to go involved and sign a multimillion dollar bond and build a new one right now.
Yeah, yeah, no kidding. Well, I'll tell you what, let's take another commercial break. Stay with us here on Sound Off.
Thank you for tuning into Sound Off. You can now text or email your questions directly to the studio. Call or text (362) 0522, or email your questions to soundoff@967theeagle.com. This is Sound Off.
And welcome back one more time to Sound Off. Our guest, Commissioner Steve Hollifield, (362) 0522. Somebody is asking, Steve, are the dips on 300 South near 250 East getting fixed?
All the materials have been ordered. They're in stock now at the Highway Department. Now that fair's over, right now, they're grinding for new road pavement. So they're going to get to that as soon as possible. The way I understand it, they're going to de-water that whole area, dig down through the peat moss, and start with a new base at the bottom and build it up. The, that issue in that section of road's been that way since I was a kid. There is a former blueberry marsh on one side of the road, a saw, the north side of the road. And now that's being a dirt bog, a peat bog moss. And it's just a, it goes through a section of low ground that as the years, it just settles slowly, settles. And so they're going to get to it again this time, and hopefully it'll last a long time.
Okay, yeah, putting a road on soft ground, that can't be the easiest thing.
No, out there on 800 East, just south of Fish Lake, they had the same issue with that through the wetland there. And they've built that up another two or three feet, and hopefully they're going to get paved next year.
All right. Somebody else is asking, how much of County Road 500 South is going to get paved?
500 South and two stretches are going to be paved, from 900 West, and it always says here, it's the first house, 100-foot pass. I'm not sure what intersection that is. And then from the railroad tracks on 500 South to 300 East, the north intersection. So one of the, one and three quarter, one and three quarter miles on that end. And that road, that's a rough stretch. I mean, that was last paved, I think, when I was a kid in that neighborhood. That's my old stomping grounds.
Okay, all right, great. Boy, they have an open burning ban right now, from Westville basically to La Crosse, some of the townships out that way, too. Less than an inch of rain the past 30 days or so. Is it as dry out in Mill Creek as it is out in that part of the county?
We took about an inch of rain last week, and it is still dry. We could use some more. And I haven't heard from our fire chief out there lately. I talked to Kyle, oh, probably once a month, just different issues he pops up. I think that's the way it should be handled. I think the fire chiefs should make the decision, because they're the ones that are going to have to answer the calls. They're not going to call my, they're not going to call me at 2 o'clock in the morning when it feels like a fire. They're going to call the fire department. So I like the way the fire chiefs are getting ahead of the game and imposing a ban themselves.
Okay, yeah, the commissioners didn't take action. It was the fire chief.
No, not like we did last year. And that was a county-wide ban last year.
Okay, okay. Are you working on anything in particular right now, Steve, that, you know, perhaps you might bring forth for a vote before the commissioners in the next month or two?
Basically, just day-to-day issues. We're going to have that hopefully soon here with the bathrooms fixed in the bottom of the Hyler Building and the second, the downstairs. Those have been out of order since April 2nd. We did get the final bill for the Hyler Building update, the sewer leak in there. That was about $200,000 to fix that. And thankfully, we did not find any contaminated soil. Those fuel leaks, those fuel tanks there did not leak. So that saved us a tremendous amount of money. But one thing I'm finding out is that you go to the office every day, the whole day, there's a lot of stuff that happens here in La Porte County, a lot of stuff. Seems like almost every day, I have one or two couples or individuals come through with a question, an answer, a problem, and we put them in the right direction to hopefully solve their problems.
Okay. I'm sure you saw the video happen during the fair. Altercation between Republican Party Chairman Alan Stevens and Commissioner County Graham Burrows. He didn't want her sign up at the fairgrounds. She wanted it back. He retrieved the sign from his truck, gave it back. It got put up the next day, but then I heard the sign was gone for the rest of the fair. What happened? I guess Alan Stevens said he was going to throw it away.
That is wrong. Whether you support or care... That is wrong, whether you support a candidate or not, um, she is running this fall, or next fall, she has a right to put that sign up. Any candidate that's running has a right to put that sign up there. Um, I think that's wrong, how he handled that, and, uh, Ms. Grammerosa is, uh, pursuing whatever issue she has to do with that to make it right with her end. So, but that's, it doesn't make us look good. I mean, I, I've occasion, I've had an outburst or two, but, uh, uh, the way that was handled him, the, was wrong, completely wrong. Um, that's, that's all I got to say about it.
Okay, yeah, because it, um, you know, you're catching a little heat, too, for...
Yeah, well, I'm used to catching heat.
Voting along with Connie Grammerosa, uh, people say you're a rubber stamp.
No, I'm not a rubber stamp. Anybody that knows me with any length of time knows I'm not a rubber stamp, and that's a fact.
All right, well, Commissioner Steve Hollifield, our guest again today on Sound Off, uh, give us a call, 362-0522. Uh, somebody is asking, what's the latest on RWE and the, uh, solar debacle? Uh, of course, that's the company that wanted to build the solar farm, right?
Correct, their permit got through under the old ordinances, some restrictions were imposed on them, nothing's been happening, and we are in the process now of updating the solar ordinance to make, put some teeth in it, because the people do not want this out here. And with the passage of the bill signed by President Trump on July 4th, I think we've put a stop to all this nonsense. Um, if it doesn't stand on its own, why should the taxpayers pay to do this, especially when it destroys thousands and thousands of acres of ground?
Yeah, right, um, so, yeah, uh, you're saying, uh, maybe the final nail in the coffin on this was delivered by President Trump?
Exactly, and this is not a farm. They plant nothing, they grow nothing, they harvest nothing. They use the word "farm" to give everybody a warm and fuzzy feeling. It is actually an industrial project being put outside of an industrial zone, and that's the issue that I have with it. When constituents come to me, we have to go with what the voters want, not just a few select landlords that don't even live in the community.
So, no milking of cows where there's solar panels, it's just the panels drawing in the sun, right?
Yes, there is, yes, there is.
Yeah, yeah, they like to compare it to a solar farm, like you mentioned, warm and fuzzy. All right, if you have a question or a comment, give us a call, 362-0522. Our guest is Commissioner Steve Hollifield. Uh, just a couple of minutes left in the show, Steve. Anything that you want to get across to voters that you haven't, uh, talked about yet?
My, my door is open, uh, my phone is always on, 219-304-3164. I've also got a personal cell phone that many people still use, it's 219-608-0208. Stop up the office, make an appointment, call me, um, I'm more than happy to sit down and talk to people, and hopefully consult their situation, listen to what they have to say. And contrary to what they said about me being a rubber stamp, they don't come to the office, they don't see the issues where Connie Grammerosa and I do not agree. Um, sometimes Joe and I agree. Um, the people, the social media, I call them cowards, none of them ever have the integrity to run for an office, at least come to a meeting and speak. No, they hide behind an anonymous post or something like that, so get up and speak. Uh, it's amazing the things I learned after becoming elected that don't quite, um, things are different than what I thought they were, but I also started asking questions 15, 20